Why doesn't it surprise me that you're the only one here?
I don't know.
We'll see if anybody else joins. I'll give it a couple of minutes. If nobody joins, I'll probably just leave you the link. I mean, I don't know that it's really gonna help you that much for me to.
You're trying so hard.
I know, I really am.
Y'all wanna pass or what?
Seriously. But it is what it is. I even tried to make it sound like fun. It is supposed to be. I put a lot of, a lot of work into this one, so I don't know, we'll see. And then it's Danielle. Like the two people that don't need to be here. Also not.
Damn.
If I made a class out of like students like you guys that actually do work, I, you know, it might be amazing, the grades that they would make. People that actually try.
Hello Danielle, I'm Daniel.
Okay, I just realized that. Danielle, that's funny. If I can get maybe a couple more people. Brent has joined us. I think it's the first time that you've been able to do it in like a really long time. It's been awhile. He's always working.
Man is on a grind. So Gary.
Yeah, we appreciate it for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I just got home.
Did you work? Like overnight?
I do 24 hour shift, 24 or 14.
Insane, insane. There's Red Bull in your bloods.
I try to avoid, maybe coffee, I try to avoid energy drinks.
Literally while I was like doing my other work, you know, waiting for this, cuz this is the most exciting thing that's happening between lab exams. I started falling asleep, so I had to go get coffee. And like, I never drink coffee, so this is gonna be bad to my evening people. I'm gonna be all sweaty and jittery. And I already can't get my words right most of the time. It's gonna be really good.
Titrate some Benadryl, like just kinda nibble on a little bit of Benadryl. Oh man. Yeah. Yeah. Had that last night with a guy who got bit by rattlesnake, and he was also on meth, so I was like titrating fentanyl with Versed with Benadryl. It worked out well.
Let me pull this up so we can start joining.
Texted my lab mates, see if they wanna join. Oh no, we already got grades for it? Oh no. Oh no.
Let's see if we can get one more person.
Where is it? Where is it? Okay, not bad. Six three three.
It's so cold in here. It's not as cold in my office as it is in the lab or anything, but I literally have a space heater right here blowing on me. That's how cold this building is.
So I know you told us to come prepared. I haven't really looked over this chapter in awhile.
You'll probably be more prepared than other people have been, yeah.
Yeah, just give it a heads up. It could get ugly, hopefully not.
It's okay, that's what we're here to address, the ugly.
Yeah, right, right crap down, totally.
If I take a picture of, like, if I were to take a picture of the QR code, if I text it to somebody, can they do something with that, or is that useless?
No, it's QR code, that's not working.
Yeah, I think, I think that you should, that should work.
Okay, I've never actually tried it that way.
QR codes are really insane. You can scan like two thirds of it, and I think it'll still work.
Yeah, next time I'll just scan it.
Dang, someone made a forty nine, insane.
It tells you that?
Yeah, it'll show us like the mean, the mean, the range, the average.
Oh, I didn't know that. I don't know.
Probably somebody in the Monday.
Monday people, man, I'm telling you.
No, that's you guys. I remember it, somebody from your class, I just can't.
Oh, I bet it's S, I forget who that was. It's her, I know it's her, she beat me, that's why. Oh wait, I totally didn't.
Yeah, I think that whoever it was. I'm pretty sure it was in your class. But it's someone that does well on tests. And there's people that do well on the lab tests, but crappy on the lecture test, and then people that do well on the lectures, but not well on the lab test. Oh yeah. Yeah, you're right. It is. Some students that fly under the radar that you don't realize are like your best students cuz they're just real quiet in the background. It's one of those. Alright. We'll just go ahead and get started with that, with you guys. Alright, which enzyme breaks down peptidoglycan? Alright, so lysosome, that whole function of lysosome in breaking down peptidoglycan, it's gonna come kinda into fruition as we go through our little steps here. Let's see. Alright, white blood cells shouldn't attack cell cells, but they don't have eyes, so how do they tell self from foreign in a mixture? A mixture of self and foreign cells, how do they know which are which? Good, I'm glad you guys pay attention to that. It is in fact gonna be surface marker identification. So when I say surface markers, those could be any molecules on the surface of the cell. So macrophages need to move around in associated tissues to get to areas of infection or inflammation. How do they do that? How do they move around in the tissues between those? The cells, the parts of the organs, organs, between the organs. The system they use is called the mononuclear phagocyte system. Macrophages are mononuclear phagocytes. So. Yeah, it's just a system for like move literally just locomotion for them to move around on like fibers and stuff like that. Alright, monocytes that have migrated out of the bloodstream and have taken residence in the skin are now called what? So monocytes. Single nucleus. They moved into a tissue. In particular, the skin, they have their own little name now. Alright. So these aren't just any kind of macrophages. We have all kinds of macrophages, but these are specific kind of monocyte that differentiates into dendritic cells. When we talk about monocytes, macrophages and dendritic cells, then monocytes are like the like sort of unspecified version and move into a tissue. You can become macrophages or dendritic cells, and then dendritic cells are the ones located in the skin. Alrighty.
I would have time with that.
Neutrophils are the most numerous white blood cells. An increase indicates presence of infection, but what type of white blood cell are they? Where would you group them? Alright, so these are granulocytes. Mast cells are also granulocytes, but they're like, just like there's neutrophil, that's a type of granulocyte. And eosinophil is a type of granulocyte, and basophil is a type of granulocyte, so we've got the fills for sure following in the granulocytes. Mast cells are also just granulocytes, so they're all just under that umbrella. This is hot. I wish I could just turn the temperature of it down. I've got the cheapest one. I had to do cheapest one, I couldn't get a nicer one. Alright, an invader, but how, so you have an invader. How does your innate immune cell know that it's an invader? Okay, so this one's a good one because innate immunity is gonna recognize that it's an invader based on the PAMP. And I think I have a question coming up about what PAMPs are, what an example of PAMP is at least, but, but yeah, the antigens, that interaction's gonna be pretty much only towards the adaptive immunity, so it'll be into T-cell response, not towards innate. Okay, so what is the difference between a PAMP and an antigen anyway? So I said some of it just now, let's see what else you can pick out from these details. Oh yeah, it's a lot of them, so it's pretty much all but the red and the purple. Because the red one says PAMPs can generate memory and they can't, so PAMPs themselves can't do that. They're gonna be triggering the innate immune response and they don't have memory. The purple one says antigens are always proteins, and that's a tricky one because usually what we learn about with antigens is that they are often proteins, but they don't have to be. They can be carbohydrates and other molecules as well. Anything that has a shape and like basically a molecular chemical interaction with an antibody or a T-cell receptor that could constitute an antigen. And if we were to look through this at antigens, we already, yeah, antigens generate memory, immunity. That makes sense, they're, they're dealing with that part of the immune system. PAMPs are molecules found on a wide variety of pathogens, and that's true, so for example, peptidoglycan is a PAMP. Obviously, we don't have that on our own cells. So if you do see, I feel like something just happened on my computer, so. Um. Anyways. Uh, sorry, got a weird email. Um. Yeah, PAMPs, peptidoglycan, obviously it's on all bacteria that have cell walls anyways, not mycoplasma, right? Because they don't, but, um.
Not sure if that's like a thing, I like had to look over that like three times in my head cuz it, it kinda read off weird. Immunity to memory, that's kinda what I, like first thought in my head.
Oh, it depends, I guess it depends on how you think about it. So, I mean, yeah, you can, you can think about it, um. I don't know, that's not how usually I think about it. Again, right, that, it just, whatever works in your brain, if it's not wrong, then it works.
I wasn't sure if it was like a specific thing.
But yeah, so, yeah, but with PAMPs, and when you've got those peptidoglycan, any bacteria have that, that, other than, you know, mycoplasma that don't have cell walls, but that indicates to your body that bacteria are here, right? So that's just a big red flag. Hey, something bad has come, it's like setting off the home alarm at the house. It doesn't tell you what the bad guy is, it just tells you there is a bad guy. So that's a, that's a great way, a great analogy for it. So yeah, that's basically what's happening. Yeah, I know, yeah, I put red flag, but yeah, PAMP is a general red flag, or sets off the home alarm, whatever works for you in that. Antigens are recognized by the adaptive immune response. I already said that, it's kinda the whole.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Alright, in phagocytosis, what vesicle is made when the pathogen containing vesicle merges with the poisonous digesting vesicle? Got two vesicles coming together, one with the pathogen. This is a literal gif of that happening. So we've got a vesicle containing some bad guy cells, and then they're merging the digestion vesicle with it to try to kill them. And that whole structure that it creates there, what to do that is in fact called the phagolysisome, so good job with that. The phagosome is the one that they're in. The lysosome contains the poisons and the digestion enzymes. So true or false, cytokines are proteins made by immune cells, and their only function is to induce inflammation? Okay, so this one is false. Cytokines are proteins that are made by immune cells. That is absolutely correct, that part of it is. But their only function is to induce inflammation? No.
It's to dampen.
Exactly, they can also dampen inflammation. They can call other cells to the location, so be like target, you know, targets for the other cells to reach to. They can also help with like triggering, you know, lymphocyte maturation and stuff like that. So they can be involved in several parts of the immune system, not just inducing the inflammation. Cool. Alright, you stubbed your toe and now it's swollen. Which term refers to the swelling that is associated with the inflammatory response? I put a bad word on this the first time I made this slide, and it wouldn't let me publish.
Now I gotta know.
It was a F-word maybe, okay? Cuz that's what I would be yelling if I stubbed my toe. Sorry, hold on real quick. People who are trying to be defiant and don't wanna join the Zoom, cuz they have to like sign in and whatever. It's too much for people.
To be fair, it is kind of annoying.
I mean, I get it, but I have to do it on every computer that I'm at too, like every day, so.
Well, where am I getting paid?
No, but you are paying for this, so you might as well spend most out of it, that's why I say. Alright, it's getting hot in your body. Endotoxin is known to induce fever, therefore it's also known as a what? What is the term? That is correct, it's gonna be pyrogen, like a pyromaniac, you know, that's a pretty straightforward one. Good, we're getting into good stuff. Ready? Now that we're raising the temperature, can you tell me what the benefit is of it? It's the sound so quiet. Good one. I got some good gifs on this, you guys.
Yes, yes, I'm down, all of it.
Alrighty, yep, so we will be decreasing the pathogen growth. They don't do well with the increased temperatures. They like it to be, you know, basically thirty seven degrees Celsius or ninety eight point six Fahrenheit. It'll also increase your metabolism and your cells metabolism, so they're doing everything faster and doing it more effectively. So we'll have that going on. So yeah, we also have the red one, fever presents sexual, prevents sexual reproduction of pathogens. Most of the pathogens aren't gonna be undergoing sexual reproduction, and the fever won't be affecting those ones that might be, which would be mostly helmets, like they're not gonna care about your fever. Fever is entirely harmful, one hundred, I'm glad you guys can choose now, good job. Good job. Alrighty. Antibody triggers a cascade reaction via this, this complement pathway, leading to opsonization, cytolysis and inflammation. Which complement pathway would it be? Alrighty, so this is gonna be the classical pathway. We've got the three pathways, there's only three. Classical, alternative and lectin. Lectin is where this molecule lectin recognizes mannose that's on the present, on the, on the surface of bacteria. There's other stuff going on with it that you don't need to worry about, but there's also alternative, which will recognize things like PAMPs, like LPS is the most common one that we would think of for the alternative pathway, so lipopolysaccharide. But yeah, classical recognizes antibody. There's antibody being made, it, no. So how confident do you feel about the innate immune system concepts? We're about to get into the other one, adaptive. Well. We're not gonna show them, I won't make you guys have to see each other's answers. Okay? All lymphocytes start out in the bone marrow, which ones mature in the thymus? Great, it's gonna be the T-cell, so they do mature in the thymus. The B-cells do all their maturing in the bone marrow before they move out into the lymphatic tissues. What, T-cells do extra stuff in the thymus. Alright, the goal for adaptive immunity is to generate memory, obviously, so how are memory lymphocytes generated in an immune response? Didn't give her the numbers, that was my fault. Um, alright. Yes, so memory cells are generated, generated with the initial differentiation, so we have just basic T-cell, let's say. It's just T-cell, it had, that's it, it doesn't, it's just like the T-cell that recognizes fidget spinner or whatever. So, which, no worries, I have one, I always do, so, um, except for I lost the one in two oh one, I don't know where that one went. No, that was a weird thing to say, but anyways. So, um, yeah. I used to keep one in all of my classrooms, and that, that one is the one that disappeared from, so whatever. The memory cells are generated with the initial differentiation, so let's say you're a T-cell and you're just a basic T-cell, you don't have any purpose in the world. We're gonna go through some of the detail on like what's gonna happen throughout the activation, but once you have seen like your match, your fidget spinner, and you're like, oh yeah, that's the one I know. Once you've differentiated into like the one that does the job, the effector, and the one that is, you know, gonna be the memory and the one that's gonna be the regulator, that happens all during everybody getting differentiated. So yeah, that's how that's gonna go. For clonal selection creates all memory cells for all clones during the maturation. That's not gonna be true, it's not gonna be the clone that's being, really the wording on that's a little strange, but the clone that is being selected for that.
Better bro.
My bad, yeah, it's okay. Yeah. Um, but yeah, the effector, effector worker cells become memory cells once the fight ends. That one, that's not true, right? They're just, they're effector cells and that's all they're gonna be. They don't change into something after that. Same thing with the regulatory, right? They're not gonna be changing into something else after they're needed, so. Whatever, but yeah. We're gonna get through a little bit of the detail of that, so we're gonna walk through it. Some molecules are simply too small for B or T-cells to engage with, so what is the term for this? Alright. Yeah, so that's gonna be hapten, that's the term for that, cuz I've got this email, and now it's like all I can see in my mind is this email that this person keeps replying me on. Which is fine, it's just I'm not very good at multitasking, so, yeah, so hapten, that's the term for that. Okay, so what's epitopes? What are epitopes?
Okay, green.
Alright, okay, epitopes are the part of the antigen that the antibody interacts with. So the choice that I guess I will just say is the most popular, the molecule that helps the immune system react to the hapten's. That's the thing, we've got the tiny part, the hapten, and then we've got the molecule that helps the hapten be bigger so the immune system can see it. That's the thing. We've got the tiny part, the hapten, and then we've got the molecule that helps the hapten be bigger so the immune system can see it. But the part of the antigen, gosh, I'm so confused because we just did the hapten's too. But yeah. Hapten's are too small to be interacted with. Antibodies and T cell receptors can't see them. They need to have something added with them, the carrier protein, so that they can be seen, right? So that's kind of what yellow is referring at. Okay, back to the big picture, though. Epitope is just a little part of the antigen that's actually molecularly being interacted with by the antibody. So, yeah, you might say that, you know, this surface receptor on the cell is the antigen, but the little bit at the end. That's actually getting interacted with is the epitope. Oh, okay. We got it. Made it through. Right, next thing. Okay, secondly, what is the term for the stuff added to the vaccine to make it work if it's not epitope? Epitope vaccine? Did I say epitope? What are talking about vaccines for? Did this shuffle the questions or something? I think I put the question in the wrong place. Hey, surprise, you add adjectives to vaccines. That's correct. Okay. Good job. Yeah. So that's something they add to vaccines to help them work more effectively. So. I know there's a molecule that can help the immune cell see hapten's. What is that called? And I just said this one. Let's see if you guys remember what that was. Happening. So that one's carrier. That's the term for it. So you have a hapten that's too small to interact with. How do you make a vaccine for something like that? Well, yeah, add something to it to make it bigger so you can see it and that thing is called a carrier. Okay, good. Finally, that's staying here. Alright. Oh my God, I forgot about this. Alright, which, which is Vladimir Putin? You can tell, you can tell. Sorry. You're gonna be laughing too much. Vladimir Putin. You can tell, just like cells can tell each other apart. How do they do it without eyes? So now we're talking about the immune system. How are they gonna be able to tell? Other cells.
What?
You didn't like that?
I'm so shocked. Like, I'm so shocked. Like, I can't think.
Thought you would like it. So yeah, the way that we tell, you know, human and other human cells apart, they're called alloantigens. So that's what this is referring to. I feel like there's slides that got mixed up in this. I went over it very carefully. I thought maybe it shuffled it. I don't know. Alright, well, whatever. As super as, you know, Vladimir might be, he's no super antigen. Because what is a super antigen? There were all these pictures, you guys, of Henry Cavill without a shirt on. And I didn't put those, so you're welcome.
Did everyone else a favor?
I mean, who wants to see that? Alright, it causes a potentially deadly overreaction of the immune system. That is correct. So what, for whatever reason, something about the molecular makeup of these super antigens. The regulatory, it's usually the regulatory cells aren't able to do their jobs and keep everything in check. So we just have it like explosive cytokine response and. Triggering of the immune system with super antigens. It's always seen with toxic shock syndrome. So antigens can come from inside or from outside of the cells. Which term refers to antigen that is inside? Alright, yes, the term for stuff for antigens or anything else that's coming from inside, items that are inside, that's gonna be endogenous. Endergonic, you know, exergonic deals with how much energy input or output. If an antigen is found inside of your liver cell, how does the liver cell let your immune system know that? Man, my four o'clock lab. I'm gonna have so much energy just sitting there. Okay. Yes, so MHC one, that's the correct answer here. It looks like we also had chosen two, but it's just a matter of remembering. Which one is which? So inside eye looks like the one in MHC one to me. That's how I remember. Great. I say, if your endogenous antigen is presented on MHC one, which type of immune response is favored? I was trying to find a gif that said the call is coming from inside the house. And this, you know.
It didn't perfect.
Yeah, but it had, this is from Scream. That's where this originally came from. Anyways, that's what I went with. But yeah, cell mediated is what we will go with here. So it's from inside. Then our cell mediated response, which that's the, that's the response that's gonna go around taking care of, you know, infected. You know, self-cells basically versus the other option would be antibody for the adaptive immune system. So antibody, of course, that's gonna crank out. Antibodies into the bloodstream. They don't do a whole lot of stuff for things that are inside of the cell. Alright, cell mediated means T cells. There are two types of T cells, helper and cytotoxic. First, which helper deals with MHC one? She looks so old.
Don't you know who that is?
Oh, you don't know who that is? This is from Grey's Anatomy. It's.
Oh yeah, definitely. Do not.
I've seen every episode of Grey's Anatomy.
Oh my God.
Yeah, it used to be one of those things that like, you know, you're homesick and you just binge watch like, you know, the entire show of all like ninety four seasons or whatever. That's how I saw Grey's Anatomy. Anyways. Yeah, I know. I know the show really well now, unfortunately, but. So TH one, so we've got TH one going with the MHC one and the MHC one looks like the eye of inside. So you can keep all those together in a nice little bubble. So that's what we will be doing with that. So the T helper one. What is the surface marker of the T helper cell, of any of the T helper cells? That's, that's a cell also.
Okay, okay.
I was looking for good cellphone pictures and then that popped up and I was like, well, I mean. Um, alright, so, oh, this is broken. My fidget spinner. Um, CD four. Whose fault could it be? I don't know. Couldn't be mine. So CD four, that's exactly right. You guys got that. So again, I remember because the four looks more like the H than an H does, which is the other option. So, oh, what about the surface marker of that other T cell? The cytotoxic one. So CD four is the helper. Exactly, CD eight's gonna be cytotoxic. I pretty much gave it away, but that's okay. That was the toxic video, by the way. I did so good on these. You appreciate it. Don't lie. Alright, cytotoxic T cells go around killing infected cells, hence cyto cell and toxic. But how do they do it?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I know. This was at two AM, guys, that I did all this. Alright.
Such a good movie.
Yeah, it is. It always will be. It's just one of the classics. So grandsimes and perforants, these are what are made by our cytotoxic T cells. Remember, perforance is gonna poke holes, perforate, and grandsimes are gonna be breaking down the contents inside. Once they go in through those holes made by the perforants. Okay. What if the antigen was found outside of the cell? What is the term for that? Okay, so this is exogenous. We talked about endogenous already. So this is its counterpart. So I'm sure you can imagine where we're gonna go next. If endogenous antigen is presented on MHC one, how is exogenous antigen presented? Alright, so something outside, hanging around, trying to cause trouble outside of your cells. And our antigen presenting cells are like the police policing the area that are gonna come around and pick up the bad guys. And then they're gonna go tell, you know, go get helped to come kill the bad guys from the other lymphocytes and go activate them and everything like that. So. MHC two. On the antigen presenting cells are gonna present those antigen to get that whole thing cranking. Alright, let's move on. Which helper T cell is involved in things that are presented on MHC two? This is also from Grey's Anatomy, by the way, Daniel.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, you know now. So this is TH two, easy enough. I feel like that's. But I don't, not too bad. MHC two, TH two. Okay, but what is an antigen presenting cell? What does that even mean? This is a real video too. Look at this macrophage going around eating up the little black diplacocai. Such a cool video. Alright, white blood cells that can display exogenous antigen on MHC two. To lymphocytes, right? And starting that whole cascade reaction in the adaptive response. So that's what they are. That's the definition of what they should be, right? So they're very specific, guys, and we're gonna talk about what kind of cells qualify. Alright, antigen presenting cells have to be white blood cells, but what kind of white blood cells can be antigen presenting cells? Alright, so. The ones that qualify are gonna be macrophages, B cells, and dendritic cells. So think of the monocytes. They were the basic, they qualify too, but they're just not on the list. So monocytes will become macrophages in the tissues or dendritic cells, depending on what tissue, right? So those are our phagocytes that are classical phagocytes that are gonna be able to eat up the bad guys, digest them and put them on MHC two. These cells are hanging out in the lymph nodes. They're just hanging out and as things pass through the lymph nodes as lymph, like from the tissue. Going back towards the heart to get recombined in the circulatory system from an inflammatory response. As it's getting filtering through there, these cells are there to pick up the debris and they can pick it up and be like, oh, hey, I found this. That's basically what's going on. Cool. Once activated, our CD four positive T helper two cells will activate what kind of immune response against the exogenous antigen? Okay, so the TH one response was related to cell mediated immunity. However, the TH two response. Responding to stuff outside of the cell, that's gonna trigger the antibody production. The antibody production also is known as the humoral response. So now we're getting ready to fight the stuff that's outside of the cell. So what is antibody, though? I keep saying that, but do you guys remember what it is?
Thank you, Dwight.
Alright. This is gonna be secreted proteins that bind with precise specificity to specific antigen. So it's that definitely gonna be proteins. Antibodies are always proteins. Even if antigens aren't always proteins. So. Let's drop that. Alright, where do antibodies come from? Okay, so the activated and differentiated B cells will produce them. So. The T cells, remember, they're gonna be part of the cell mediated immunity. That's all they do is sell stuff. They aren't gonna make antibody that does all of its other type of stuff. B cells that have been activated, differentiated to their effector form, the job doing form. They are gonna crank out this antibody and that's all they do. That's all B cells do. Just crank out antibody. They don't go and fight and fight themselves. Like the T cells will. So what is the term for activated and differentiated B cell? They get their own term. Alright, so that's gonna be plasma cells. That's correct. That's the term for that. But yeah, that will reason I picked that gif is just because I feel like this is turned into inception because I keep going deeper and deeper and deeper into a question. And a choices and I liked that. So. Well, it was fun for me. Anyways, plasma cells are differentiated B cells, but before that could happen, what did the newly activated B cells do first? We differentiated, but what happened before differentiation? Alrighty, so first you proliferate and then you differentiate. So you will multiply. You have just B cell that has no function whatsoever that gets activated. And then it's gonna multiply. And then this set over here will turn into effector cells and then this set here will be regulator cells and this set here will be memory cells. And that's how that will work out. So they proliferate, proliferate, and then those proliferated cells differentiate into the functions that they have. Okay, but before that, before activation or even antigen even was seen. How, what was going on with that B cell and every other B cell? Okay, so this one is gonna be clonal selection. That's definitely the term that's going to be associated here. But in this case, clonal selection to get rid of self-reactive clones. So that's what we do first before we make our repertoire. Of stuff to choose from that we can activate. So we'll get rid of self-reactive guys first. And that happens before we even see. The bad guy. That happens way earlier than your body's development. So getting back on track with our story, plasma cells are cranking out antibody. What class of antibody is made first? Alrighty, so the first one that you make is gonna be IgM. Just a matter of remembering that one. IgM, it's that pentamer. It's not super effective, but we can make it en masse. And then we will try to class switch. But what is even the point of, what does it do? What does antibody do? Okay, so it can do everything.
Okay.
What? So it can do everything. It's able to do it all. This is like one that I have in a lot of my reviews, but that's okay. It does complement activation. So we already know antibody does that. That was that classical pathway we introduced earlier on in the talk, but. I'm probably gonna ask you that question again. I think I'm asking it again later, but. Whatever. Agglutination, causing the bad guys and antibodies to stick all together to create big clumps that stops them from doing their business. Opsinization. Optinization, that's gonna be a question in a little bit, what that is. Neutralization, that's going to be blocking its binding sites, so it can't use its little key to get into the lock on the surface of your cells. Antitoxin, doing the same thing with any toxins that your bad guys producing and then coating. Which is just covering the outside surface of. The bad guy altogether, just so it can't do anything, not specifically on the keys, but just covering it. All right, first of all. What complement pathway is activated by antibody? Again, we saw it earlier and I literally just said it. Compliment. I remember this episode. I feel like he's saying that to the baby that we're trying to pretend isn't is. If you guys ever watched The Office, I don't know, but I feel like that's what's happening in that. It just occurred to me. So, yeah, this is the classical pathway for this one. All right, and optinization. See if you can tell me what that is. All right, so optinization is whenever we have, create basically whatever protein we're talking about. It can be complement from what we've learned, or it can be antibody like we're talking about now. But either way, they can directly bind onto the surface. Or the coating of whatever organism it is, capsules or what I'm talking about specifically. And then create almost a handle, molecular handle for the phagocyte to come and grab whenever it's trying to undergo phagocytosis. All right, maybe IgM is made first, but we'll switch classes later. Which antibody class is associated with allergies? All right, so this one's gonna be IG E, IGA. I often get them flip flopped. In my memory, if I haven't refreshed it recently, so I understand this completely. It's the vowel ones. So. A is dealing with the mucosa and E is dealing with allergies. It's harder to, because allergy starts with A, but yeah, if I were to say allergies with the E, that's IG E, but you probably just can see A and think allergy, but. I don't know. I'm not sure how to make that one clearer. All right, so you can even measure. IgM versus IgG or E or whatever it is during the course of the infection, the antibody concentration is also called. What else is it called? Has a term? All right, that concentration is called tighter. That measure of the antibody is the tighter. And we can use Eliza to determine it, for sure. So which response is fastest and most effective? All right, so the fastest response and the most effective response is gonna be that secondary response. The primary response, referring to your first time that you're ever seeing an immunogen or antigen or pathogen, whatever. The first time you see it takes you a long time to get your lymphocytes even activated, then you have to make IgM. And class switch to IgG or whatever. The second time you see it, you'll just make IgG. You don't have to, you know, activate your B cells and all this stuff, rigor that you went through the first time. They're already waiting as memory cells, so they can just start franking out that IgG right away. So that'll be the secondary response. All right, you can take advantage of immunity to protect yourself from a disease before you get it. What term describes vaccination? Already. Artificial. And active. So I would explain it, except that I'm pretty sure that we're going through that on the next part. I remember, man, this was the end of it and I was like really tired. Right, vaccination is artificial active, but what does artificial mean? And what does active mean? Pick the two. Okay, so when we're talking about. With vaccination. Artificial is something that is just non, not naturally induced into your body. So if you introduce into your body, so if you're seeing chickenpox naturally, because you went. To the party you were brought to with your friends, a party. Then. That, if you were brought into, you know, a hospital and they injected the party into your arm instead. So that would be an artificial exposure. You weren't exposed to it naturally. So that's what artificial mean. So the antigen came from medicine and not natural. Then we have active. What active means is that it triggers your own antibody production. Okay, so. Other options, artificial versus we said natural, so anything you're exposed to naturally that you were like just living your life and you came upon it, right? Or that you naturally, you know, encountered, like. If you were, when we talk about passive, we should move on to that part, probably just stop getting on to the first part, but. Active versus passive, those are your other two. Active means that you are creating your own immune response. Passive means the immune response was given to you somehow. And how does that happen? It means you're not making the antibody. Therefore, you're not making memory. Instead, what's happening is we're giving you antibody. And how do you do that naturally? That, our best example was through breastfeeding and colostrum that is given to the baby during that breastfeeding act. That's a natural act that's going on. However, you can have the artificial act of put, you know, passing on. Immunity via, you know, giving. Immunoglobulin infusions, things like Humira, which is a monoclonal antibody, is an example as well. So, yeah. That's the difference between artificial and natural. And then active versus passive. All right, true or false? The innate immune system is just as important as the adaptive immune response. That true or false? Of course, it's true. You know, you have to have the innate in order for the adaptive to work and the innate is what's going to be staging all of that. All right, so again, I won't show your responses. How confident do you feel about the acquired immune system concepts? All right. Good job, guys. So. That's what I've got for you. This is the hardest. I think this is the hardest stuff for everybody, the immune stuff, this and the genetics. This and genetics for sure. But take, take a little bit of time to go back over it. I'll post the link to this too, so you can go through it. And think through it in your own minds and without me talking and trying to answer emails in the middle of it. And, you know, take a little time to study over your stuff and then ask yourself the questions again and maybe it'll help. But that's it. That's what I've got for the review today. It went by a lot faster than what it felt like putting it together last night, but I hope that you guys had a good time with it. So I will have unit one and two ready on Monday and Tuesday, depending on what class you guys are in. And then Wednesday and Thursday will be three and four. And we'll be probably, I hope, I hope it will work out that we can do competition, because I think it would be. Or if it's not competition, like I said, like the ones that collaborate, like the whole class is working together to get something. So that would be, those games, I think, will be a nice change in pace, but. Anyways, do you guys have any questions off the bat for me right now before I kick you out? All right.
I can't think of anything.
Well, if you guys do, you know, you can always email me.
Thank you so much for doing the review for us. I think, oh, I want to bring up an idea. If you, I'm not sure how much you care about whether or not they go to your study sessions, but you can offer extra credit similar to how you do the lecture stuff.
I might do something like that. I didn't wanna, you know, because this was sort of like, something we came up with in the middle of the semester. So I did, probably in the future, I will probably do that.
Yeah, because I can imagine that could easily motivate people to just to get here and observe some information, at least.
We've been doing, you know, I'm sure I'll say, because you guys, you know, try to do well in class. But the extra credit assignments that we have with writing the questions and, you know, most people are just Googling and copy pasting and whatever. I feel like if I took out that extra credit and then made this the extra credit instead, I think that that could be. More beneficial than that, but. Not to say they can't, they can always, of course, still do that, but that I think is better for extra credit opportunities, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll let you guys go and I, once this, you guys know this hashtag, take a while to process, but once it does. I'll get it posted and then I'll post the link to this with it so that you guys have it to practice with.
Thank you.
So much, Professor.
All right, bye, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.